Welcome, everybody. Thank you for attending at our special meeting on Friday, November 14th at 2:00 PM. And let's go ahead with the roll call.
Chair Tyson.
Here.
Vice Chair Klein.
Here.
Director Meadows, here. Megacek.
Present.
Joe Walter, here. Wallyan.
Present.
Rennie.
Here.
Thank you. I will note that we have a full present.
Very much.
Since we're all here in person, we don't have to do roll call votes, do we?
That's be the normal rule.
Okay.
Good. Uh, do we, we're now looking for public comment and our matter is not listed on the agenda. Do we have any public comments in the room? Do we have any online?
None online.
We'll move on then to our consent calendar and then, uh, and just, just by way of background, this is the same consent calendar you saw on Wednesday minus the contract for Monica, which has to be done at a regular meeting. So that was pulled and there's no consequence to poor Monica here because the, the changes are all retroactive when we do approve it.
And have an existing contract.
And she has an existing contract.
Yeah.
And so that's correct. So now let's move on to consent. And do we have any items that anybody wishes to pull?
I, I don't wanna, I, I do not want to pull any of this, but I have some questions.
Why don't we proceed with the questions and then, uh,
Okay.
First off, does anybody want to pull any items? I did not see any. Now let's go with people who want to ask a question. We could do it at some point. Uh, let's go to the public. Do we have any public comments? I don't see any here or online. So let's move on. We will now look at questions from board members without actually pulling the item.
Good. Okay. I do this all the time in our, um, council meetings. Anyway, under one C, we're, it seems like there's been quite a bit of, um, changing around with the auditors. And, um, uh, because of mergers and things, I just wondered, are we still going to be working with the same personnel or do we know?
Yeah, we have, um, uh, General Counsel Callahan on to answer.
Yeah.
We are.
The, the, right now, we're, we're still working with the same individual auditors, um, and their entity has merged with these other organizations, but we still have the same folks that have been working with us, um, over the years.
So in other words, it's really a big change for them, but not so much for us.
That's correct.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Can I have a follow-on question? Please go ahead. Um, so I think it's good practice every few years. I don't know what the right number is to change auditor so things don't get too set. Um, are we, you said for several years. Are we getting to the point that we need to think about doing an RFP and changing auditor? And you're from the audit committee. Can I answer my question?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. We, I believe our charter says, or our policy says, we have to put it out for a proposal every few years, but the audit partner changes periodically and we have had a change two years ago with the, with the audit partner. And that's the person that signs off. So they don't get complacent or whatever.
Thank you. That sounds good to me.
So Director Megacek is the chair of the audit committee. Um, but we also have, I'm ready, I think was going to be online too, Andrea. Any other questions? But my understanding, just to, to add on to what Mike said, is the contract is, we didn't change any of the terms of the contract. New, new extension, increase in dollars, same scope of work. It's just the merger that you're approving.
Great. Okay. And then, um, another question I have is under the decarbonization strategy quarterly report. And I have to say, I love this report. I think it's fascinating and so I really appreciate it. And, um, one of the things I always wonder when I look at these reports are what are the goals? You know, we talk about what we're supposed, what we've done, which is great. And we don't necessarily, in some cases, there's, it looks like there's a goal in there too, because in the infographic will have sort of a big, a big blob and only half of it will be colored. So I take that to be the goal. Um, but, which is fine.
Big blob is a goal.
Which is fine. Big blob. Maybe that, that's not the right way to say it, but the whole group, uh, the icons function as the goal. Okay. Um, that's better. But, um, I was wondering about the contractors. We talked about that a little bit after that, um, uh, you know, after the meeting. I think the fact that we're training contractors is, um, to electrify, uh, structures is just hugely important. Um, and, uh, and I see that it seems like we've done quite a few. I believe it was 300, something like that.
About 350 have completed the training.
Yeah.
And we've also, we've got the component where it's a, once they come, once they do an install for one of our customers, they also get a, a bonus for completing that install. And so we've done a little bit over 300 of those types of claims.
Which I think is undoubtedly inspirational for those people to finish and, and do it. So that's great. But I was wondering, uh, what percentage, or do we know, what percentage of sort of the contractor base that we feel is needed to electrify generally in our area? Have we done an assessment of that? What's, how, how far do we have to go with this? I have no idea how many contractors are involved or would need to be involved to do the magnitude of work that we have, um, coming up. So I was just wondering about that.
It's a good question. I don't have the answer to it offhand, but we, we, we can pull that together and, and see. I think it, it depends on the size of the contractor, like the, the companies, obviously, because we have some companies where it's just one contractor. That's the whole company and some where we're, we've got multiple people coming to our program from the same company and they actually refer each other within the org. So, which we like as well. It's, it's all hopeful. I think as we work through the decarb roadmap refresh as well, which is going to be an item over the next few months, that's another place where we can kind of look at, okay, what is the critical mass? I think it's sort of what you're asking for is like, how many will it take? And I don't know that there's a specific number, but there's probably a range that we can put together. Our program originally, we were gonna, we targeted 300 contractors trained. So we're, we're, we're past it and we still have budget to keep going. And so we're continuing, uh, and we, we had targeted something like 500 incentives, I think, for that. People actually doing the installs, which we still have some room to go on that part. But I think it was intended that that was gonna be, that wasn't gonna be enough, but it was, it was gonna be directionally trying to push forward. So I don't, I don't have the answer though of like exactly what the number needs to be, but we can, we can pull something together and try to guess at that.
Thank you. That'd be great. I just, I, I do think that, that what the sort of, what's the desired saturation of the, you know, of the contractor field is, is from our training is, is something we should think about. Thank you.
My dream would be every contractor, but I will, we'll find a reasonable, appropriate number.
Okay. Well, thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you for that question. I'm, I'm puzzling how I would have answered that question. I don't, I don't have the answer either. But I would probably look to say, what is our goal in terms of number of units per year? And then turn it into how many per week and then how many active things and then what percent and have an overage there. So turn that into a number. Okay.
I, I, I wonder how much this is really important anymore. When we first dreamed it up, this was fairly new. But you can go to Home Depot and you can, you got a whole bunch of different heat pump water heaters you can buy. So clearly, you know, the, the, generally the base has learned how to install them. When I got mine brought in, I didn't bother to go to your contractors because they're like, oh yeah, we can figure that out. You know, we've done it before. It wasn't a problem. So I'd almost wonder if we should shift funding to something else now because I suspect this is not that big a deal anymore. I'll wade in and say, I've had several heat pump water heaters installed, various properties. And it is evolving and people are getting more experience, but they still make mistakes. And nothing upsets someone more like me to have the heat pump water heater put in and it's called for an inspection. And I'm like, the contractor doesn't have to show up because the contractor should have done it correctly. Doesn't, inspector comes, fails the inspection. That gives heat pump water heaters a bad name. So I just, I, I don't think we're there yet.
I'm just, I'm suggesting we think about it at some point.
What does this look like, I guess?
Yes.
What would that look like?
It's a, it's a great observation. We're still at a very small fraction of all water heater installations being heat pumps in this region compared to, uh, gas like-for-like replacements. We also have, uh, a contractor bench and we do reach out to the contractor community periodically to try to assess what is happening. You know, we know the people who go through our program and, and can do it, but there are a lot of other contractors who don't. And so trying to understand, is this still an important incentive for us to be providing or, you know, are people doing it anyway? And I, I think especially as local rules change and everything continues to evolve, there will come a point where we, we won't need to be doing this anymore. I think, you know, we still have a chunk of the budget left and so we're still sort of planning on spinning that down. I think the question would be, do we re-up it once we hit the end of that? And I think that's a, a very important question for us to think about.
And that's part of the decarb roadmap discussion that we're having with the board. Starting.
To set the kind of priorities around some of that. Yeah. So there'll be a chance to kind of weigh in and give that direction.
Director Waller.
Thank you. So just to add something to it, when you bring the decarb conversation back forward, just think of, uh, Rob made a remark about the water heater. How is it different and maybe something else from Brian's experience? What about the heat pump each one to this system? Are the contractors equally familiar with both? Because we are trying to work on that. I'm staying out of it and my husband's observation is no. People need his call to talk to them. Uh, he feels they are not adequately informed or again, his observation, he could be wrong. So what are we missing? So just bring back information. Thanks.
Any other comments or questions? I believe, uh, looking for motion for approval of consent. So moved.
Second.
Uh, will you do a voice vote then? All in favor?
I am.
Opposed? I'm staying.
Did you take public comment on this?
Great. Thank you. That concludes your consent calendar. We'll now move on to the regular calendar and the CEO report.
Okay. So, and I never to make this, and we have two highlights out of the report. The first one, doing that, as you are aware, is a re-essential notification. We're having a special board meeting or workshop on December 12th to talk about things, including the decarb roadmap and the financial levers we've given that we see, um, in our future, a different financial kind of outlook than we've had the last few years. And so we'll have that discussion in a workshop style. We're bringing in a facilitator to help with that discussion, to get really good input from the board, while we can prioritize and, and set up our work plan. Uh, so when we move into the next kind of phase of SBCE, we have a third direction from the board in terms of what's important in those areas.
What time is it?
It's at 10:00 AM. But, and this is the part where we have to kind of figure out the whole agendizing or noticing part. We also have, because it's our staff in-person days that same week, um, we will have a speaker come meet with staff that morning. Severin Bornstein, he's with, uh, Berkeley's Energy, Haas Energy Institute. And so he's gonna come talk to us about things like data centers and AI and what's happening in California and all that. He's kind of a, he's a blogger. He's a, I guess, a, just a think tank in itself, right? He, he does a lot of kind of publics, publishes a lot of information about what's going on in the industry in California. But you're all invited to attend, but it won't be a board meeting. So we just have to figure out how to notice it. And that's what we're trying to work on. We don't want to invite people back. That'll be at 8:30 in the morning. And so the location is, is finalized and Andrea will send that out as well.
8:30. It's just 10:00 on line.
Well, that's the time that's the board meeting.
That's important.
But if you want to come listen to Severin along with staff, you're more than welcome to, but it's not going to be a board.
He's a very good speaker. He's often, you'll hear him on TV news or NPR. Anytime there's some energy, he's, he's one of the calls.
Right. So that's, uh, December 12th. And then because there was a couple of questions about what's the latest and greatest happening with reach codes and or, uh, building code enhancements, we have a director of decarbonization and policy on the, on the line. So we need to just give you a brief update of what's going on.
Great. So I'm gonna give a quick update. Happy to answer any questions. Um, so I'll start with, uh, the, a list of four of our member agencies who have completed the, a second reading of their, of their reach codes. Um, so Saratoga, um, passed their second reading as five zero. They moved from a two-three vote to a five-zero vote. It was great to just have the opportunity, not just for passing that, but also for the engagement um, with board members on that, our council members. A Mountain View, Sunnyvale and Los Altos have also completed their second readings. Um, Los Gatos and Los Altos Hills have completed their first readings. All six of those, um, included two-way AC in their code. And then five, um, everybody except Los Altos Hills decided not to do this one, which is, is also included electrification readiness. Those, those are the, um, two codes that folks are moving forward with. In the planning space, uh, we are working now with the County of Santa Clara, um, to move forward sometime next year. And so that's also just a note. It is fairly common in the past for, um, some jurisdictions to adopt local code enhancements after they have adopted the standard building code. So, um, we're always on standby for any, um, member jurisdictions that have, uh, would like to move forward, um, after, uh, the first of the year. And so then the next step, I think I've said this a couple of times, but now that we've moved through the bulk of voting, I just want to kind of pause and remind folks that the logistical process with Sacramento is a little different this year because of the, um, because now jurisdictions can pass codes when there are these exemptions in place. And so we're, we have worked with all of our jurisdictions in the kind of process. I don't know how many folks know this. After you pass it, it goes to Sacramento and the Building Standards Commission does their review. It's usually a very, almost a procedural process. Um, because this year is a little bit different, we worked really closely with all staff to follow the letter of the law exactly as it's written. We'll see how BSC then kind of interprets if they have slight questions. We aren't anticipating, we aren't expecting any questions or have hints that there could be that, but we just are saying this, the process is a little different. So, uh, we will also be on hand if comments come back or the process changes a little bit. But this particularly, Mountain View and Sunnyvale did pass most of their codes before October 1st, which was one of these key deadlines. But for the other jurisdictions, we're going through this process for the first time. And we all know, we can't always exactly predict how that's gonna go. So, uh, we're going through that. And then the next piece will be, um, implementation. We are already working with our consultants on implementation resources. Um, and of course, that will be, um, the longest part of the process that starts sometime after January 1st. Actually, implementation, but we'll continue to provide support. Um, any other questions that folks have that I can provide detail on?
See, I do, I, I don't see any questions here in the room. And so I have many questions, but comments from Director Waller.
I'd like to put this on record. Big thanks to SBCE. As you heard me say at the last executive committee meeting, I, city council approved it three-two at the first vote. And I knew those two votes stayed together. And I appealed in the PC meeting to Monica and her team and you guys delivered beautifully. Got us five zero for the second meeting, which was fabulous.
With no change between the first and second reading, just the vote change. Yes.
You might give worth a little credit to Tina.
I, I may do it. Thank you. I, I also, uh, once again requested my city manager because, uh, Brownite, I can't talk to others. And often the influence can be different from whether it's coming from Monica or Zoe from the city manager. So it was really teamwork, I would say, from the city manager, who some of you met last night at, probably uh, city association meetings, three days in a row. I'm having our time. I'm trying. So yeah, just big thanks to SBC. And I'm thrilled, I'm thrilled beyond words.
But I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to say that I can take no credit for this. This has really been, uh, Zoe and Tony and the four and Jess and Eric who have done all this work. I'm just trying to say out of the way.
Well, I add one more thing. Bruce Cardy came and he said, this is his second visit to Saratoga council meeting. First was when SBC was to be launched or something like that. He came, he spoke and once he saw the trend, it was on consent, no discussion. It was on consent. Part of the whole building code update, which we did not expect because the first one was split by zero for building toilet free from this. And Bruce Cardy said, but I came prepared for this, but I'm happy to. So it was wonderful. And it was good to see that he showed up willing to back for SBC.
Thank you. Director Waller, Vice Chair.
Sure. And I also just want to echo what Tina said, you know, thanks to staff for, for being available to city staff and, and, you know, being the experts in the room. Um, so was happy to see that go forward. Zoe, just as a secondary thing, for our personal standpoint, I would like to see, you know, at some point, um, the differences between what each of the cities did. And conceivably, as we talked about Wednesday night, having that information when I'm talking to advocates that are somewhat against uh, some of the green building codes, just to, to also say, this is what the different cities did across the county. And it doesn't, and, and it really doesn't affect the majority of what they're doing. But, but it's educating them and also saying, it's not just one city or one, you know, one jurisdiction. It's a positive effect that we try to get in place, um, before some laws change for the states. So, yeah.
Thank you.
We have that happy to share.
Thank you. Director Shaw.
I was just gonna, um, echo my thanks to, for Mountain View. Uh, I, I know that our staff worked really, really hard kind of all summer to do this. And, um, I know they worked hand in glove with you, Zoe and, um, and, uh, so like Tony and me. I really appreciate it being able to count on that expertise. Anything difference? So thanks.
Director Rennie. And for, for those cities that have, I don't know if any of them are here, haven't done it yet. All of the opposition, none of it was valid concerns. They had imagined things like $50,000 trenching requirements because this was going to require a, a panel upgrade, which was not the case. So, you know, in Los Gallos, we got form letter after form letter, oh my God, this is terrible, don't do it. As soon as, you know, and it really helps Tony coming to explain everything and soon as you're looking and, you know, it's like, okay, staff, can you give me an option where I don't require this and I don't require that? Well, that's your main, main option. Okay, great. And everybody votes for it, right?
Important lesson learned. Director Rennie.
Yes, uh, on, on that very note, uh, I'm pleased to say that the county did not do it, uh, based on the deadline. We, you know, we've called many times, tried to put something through, but our staff, our staff was not able to, uh, put through, uh, something like this, uh, before the deadline, unfortunately. Number one second is, um, we did get the, uh, we met with the, I believe it was a realtors, they came to see us.
With Silvar.
Yeah, Silvar. I got the, once more. Uh, basically having the same discussion of the electrical, uh, upgrade cost and how difficult it is. And so I, I think there's a lot of education and information that needs to be shared with the different entities because a lot of these fear are not real. And a lot in terms of dollars and cents. I think it'd be helpful to actually get real, like, officials to explain the dollars and cents of what needs to be done, we have to do this. Because I think at the end of the day, this is no need to, I think, to, we, I'm preaching quiet in this room. I think it's really important for us to be able to explain it to consumers and then in stone also builders. Make sure that, uh, this fear is really not that, uh, there might be like one or two of those houses that would spend $5,000, but they might be living in some gyntes or whatnot where that trenching would be needed. Majority of the housing that we're talking about will not have those things. Maybe four-digit, not five-digit like that, but, and then more than three-digit for that matter. So I think it's important to, to get the facts straight because right now, all these different numbers being flying around, uh, to stop the, the, the work that, that is so important. Because I think we are not coming up. What we do here, what I've learned being in the county, is that there are so many counties and cities in California and outside the state of California watches what we do. Because of that, um, if we cannot do a good job explaining it, it's hard for them to do their work. Because when we, you know, when they think, think globally, act locally, we are doing that right now. So I think it's so important that we need to spend more, more effort to think, to work down down and to like make it sound, but to really get the facts straight so that information is accurate on the dollars and cents. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, let me speak and then will be, uh, Director Waller and Director. Uh, I think those are really good points. Uh, and I'm actually reminded of the, the forum we had in Mountain View about a year ago. The one that was so interesting, I had to pay $10 extra because my parking expired, but we had contractors as part of the, the PIP. I, yeah, I hold a grudge. Okay. We had contractors as, as part of that. I think that was really powerful. Before we could keep doing that, that'd be great. Director Waller.
Thank you. So just to add to that, uh, great points, education. So we went with a soft approach, knowing that we would not be able to. I knew the situation. The three-two was no surprise to me. So in spite of that, in spite of me requesting deeper ahead of time and our building department official to talk about the requirement for the, uh, electrical panel upgrade or not, is it may I use the word tone deaf? If somebody doesn't want to hear it, that's essentially, I'm sorry to use that word, but that was essentially my personal, uh, perception of people who didn't want to hear that. And we are not even requiring and staff responded because another colleague of mine who did say yes the first time, her question, in spite of me explaining, was the same electrical panel upgrade required? And staff members responded, no, in that scenario, we are not even requiring them to do so. In spite of that, two members did not. So there is something more than I agree with you. And we want to have basic education, but perhaps if the county can't bring it forward in its best scenario, maybe twice, that's kind of what, uh, Saratoga and Saratoga and I'm very thrilled and I'm very proud of Jeff. That's why I'm thanking you for the five zero.
Uh, question for you. The, did it go to a boat or did it just not even get to the agenda?
The staff couldn't put it together. Uh, that's not, oh, just on the time it is. Which I, which is for me also slightly disappointing to say the least, given the resources we have. So, and in fact that you really don't deal in heavy lifting. A lot of the work is already done. But we have the whole point, right? Is a lot of the sample templates is already there. It's just a matter of using it. So, uh, I, so there's some, there's discussion I need to, to profile the terminals down, using this as a bad example, by not doing this again. But anyways, that's my work that I need to, you know, it's pretty much.
I would think that there would be a fair amount of support at the supervisor level, particularly with Margaret, who had, was involved, you know, for years. Anyways, sorry, I don't mean to go on. It's, uh, 2:30.
I think we're having a really nice discussion now. Okay. You know, normally I get a little tense, but I'm not tense right now. So are there any other comments while we're here?
Well, agreement. That's a good one.
The choir preaching and whatnot. Yeah. All right. With that, I'm gonna ask if there's any public comment. Seeing none. Uh, thank you for the CEO report. And we'll now move on to board member announcements and direction on future agenda items.
Um, I'm going to share something and see if other folks have, um, experienced this and maybe, uh, SBC takes it up. Or you're already, is Zoe still online? I don't know. She might be. She is. Okay. Um, so actually it was at Supervisor Lee's. I used climate platform a week or two ago. I met a gentleman named Bruce Hodge with Silicon Valley. No, not Silicon, yeah. Um, wait. He's a, so, Silicon Valley and also Palo Alto, Silicon Valley and also Bay Area Clean Air. And so it seems that they're starting to mount a campaign to get, well, it's changed in the, just the couple of communications I've had with them, but to get council members, if not cities, to support Bay Area air districts, um, measures nine four and nine, nine six and nine four, rules nine six and nine four. And apparently a similar thing was settled in Southern California recently. So I don't know if, who would be, whether it be Ben or Zoe or, you know, give us an update and keep us informed because it seemed to me this year when our federal government changed so much that we'd be seeing Because it seemed to me this year when our federal government changed so much that we'd be seeing this and it sounds like we are. So I would like to be updated on it and that could be a future thing or if, yeah.
Zoe, just to, just to add, Zoe is leading an effort of all the area CCAs and some of the cities to get, to prepare for these rules as well, both from an education and contractor training, um, everything else. And so I think you're gonna be happy to provide them the features, okay?
Well, it's preparation, but it's also understanding the opposition that's mounting because there's a lot. And so what are, um, what are the strongest things we can support and not? So that is, you know, something that would be good to help us understand.
And we have Director Lee is here on the board too, right? And you want the air district, well, it's.
Oh.
Bad.
Bad, bad to the bone.
You're not quality.
No, they're bad.
I would deeply appreciate that, uh, suggestion from Sally. Because that was actually the argument made by my colleague in the council meeting, saying no the first time.
Right, it ties in.
That, yeah, the argument was, uh, a body of unelected officials.
Yeah, no, I've heard it.
Uh, have no reason to, uh, put these rules in place. I'm looking at the upper, you recall me?
Yeah, right, yeah.
Connect those, right, the wording.
Yeah, yeah. But regardless, it would be nice not to pretend it's not there and we're gonna, we're gonna have to deal with it.
Yes, thank you.
Uh, Director Lee. Yeah, so I just, thanks so much, uh, Sally on this. And then just wanted to thank our team, our staff here for attending the new climate, uh, uh, roundtable we hosted a couple of weeks ago. Uh, one of our star speakers, Monica, uh, I'm there along with many of our team. Uh, I saw many of our team members there. I think Zoe, you were there as well, uh, for, for being there. Uh, I'd like to thank, uh, I believe Chair Tyson, President Melz, were both there as well. Um, it's really exciting to see how many young people are getting involved. We all know that they get it. It's really the older generation, us, are not getting it. And so it's fun to see when the youths are dragging their parents, the shop room, the drivers. And they are then listening to what we're talking about, oh, I didn't know that, right? So it's really, it takes a big generation to educate us. So it's really glad to see that on one of the booths. On the, was it Thursday night at four PM? The room was packed in Campbell. I, I couldn't believe.
We had delicious sandwiches and other things.
Where did those come from? They're from really good Romney.
Yes, those were from, uh, I think Luke, the catering.
Luke.
It was, they were all, uh, vegan, I believe. And it was extremely delicious, that you wouldn't know was vegan.
Yes. No.
As I told you, it was amazing. Yes, uh, so, and they were gone.
I know.
So, so anyway, so just say thank you for, for attending. It was great. I call it the first annual event. We plan on doing it again in the future years. But the amount of, uh, uh, excitement, of, of participation was truly, uh, uh, amazing. And I think a lot of it too is due to the, what we're going through in the nation. Uh, the shutdown at the time, the government shutdown anymore, but with the, the stuff just coming from DC and whatnot. I think people are really feeling a little bit of a depression, a loss. But at the same time, I think it's so important to understand that that's exactly what we need to do is we need to double down on our efforts to, 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 to do this fight. It's easy to be discouraged and tired, but that's exactly what we need, like, all. And so these kids are willing to do. Thank you.
Thanks for setting that up. And before I call on Director Shaw to follow up on that, at your event, I met Secretary Lee, the executive director, and now I'm having lunch with him in two weeks. So it's having a little connection, I think, where you agree that all of young people influencing the adults, including the age of, families groups. So I think it's nice connections to make.
Okay, I reminded you, um, one thing I wanted to share. Um, but last Friday, I attended Stanford's Policy Day on resilience. And it was really more oriented toward, uh, natural restoration, um, for, uh, dealing with impacts to climate change. But not totally. Anyway, um, I've often felt that the town-gale connection that we have um, in a lot of agencies isn't nearly what it could be. And so I will, um, I just got the, you know, the master email you get after these events with all the presentations. And I'll, I'll share it with, um, with Andrea and she can share it with everybody. I think that gets around the Brown Act, right? Anyway, but I would just urge you to, um, look at some of these presentations and kind of see the speakers as people at Stanford who are, are thinking that they, they want to reach out more to the communities. And I, I don't really have a, a specific, um, this is how we should connect concept in my head for SBC. I've been thinking about it a lot with B C D C. But, um, but one of the things that the, uh, political scientist, um, who spoke, John Katz, he talked about having done a, um, a, a, a big, uh, survey on, uh, throughout America on, um, people's attitudes toward climate change and whether or not people believed in it. And it was quite shocking how high the numbers were. I mean, compared to what we hear in the national press, um, that, the, so, and he said, he, he did say that he was interested in working with municipalities to help us do better surveys. He can't do the surveys, but he could help with RFPs or, you know, talking about criteria and that kind of stuff. So I thought that was really interesting. And then, you know, I always have to share the good things, some of the good things that happened in Mountain View. One of the good things is we ran out of our rebates for heat pumps.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, we had put three hundred thousand dollars into the heat pump program and it's all been spent. So, um, we're gonna, we're gonna ask the resident council to give us a little more money to, um, to continue with the program. And we'll see whether that happens, but I think that that's, that speaks well to, you know, your contractor training. And all of those, all of those things that tie together, right? Is that the one that we're administering, that we're? Yes, yes, yeah, and then.
Automatically later.
Didn't know PETA's run out of money too?
Yep.
Didn't know PETA's also run out of money?
They have two point six million.
They have more than you.
That's a lot.
It's a DOE grant.
Oh, yeah, we just had three hundred thousand, so, yeah, it was just a hundred. But anyway, it was kind of cool. Congratulations, yeah.
All right. Any other announcements? Uh, with that, thank you, everybody, and we'll adjourn.